Seven o'clock, so we'll call the town council meeting of June 10th, 2025 to order. Jennifer, will you take role?
Councilmember Aberish.
Here.
Councilmember Brown.
Here.
Councilmember Gold.
Here.
Councilmember Wall.
Here.
Mayor Domkowski.
Here. Councilmember Aberish, will you lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance?
The flag, United States of America, republic, which stands one nation, under God, individual, liberty and justice strong.
Much. Okay. We will open up public comments, so this is for persons wishing to address the council on any matter not posted on the public agenda for tonight. Please note how we're that the council is not able to undertake extended discussions or act on non-agendized items. Those items can be referred to staff for a future agenda. Communication is limited to five persons, three minutes each. Is there anyone here that would like to comment on an item not on the agenda tonight? Ms. Lubin.
You guys are lucky, two weeks in a row.
Yeah.
This is actually a tribute. It's a, it's a history, Thalia Lubin History Committee. It's actually a tribute, but it's a history moment. So I, I wanted to acknowledge the passing of Chuck Davis from the San Francisco architectural firm, Asher Comzy Dodge &amp; Davis. For those of you not familiar with the firm or Chuck, he was the lead architect for the Monterey Bay Aquarium, claim to fame. E-H-D-D were also the architects for the moving and restoration of Independence Hall and for the creation of our new town hall. Steve and I had the extreme pleasure of working with Chuck and his associate Bob Hersey on the Woodside School Library, which incidentally used to be a classroom over by the tennis courts, and this was in 89, we moved it. It's actually the oldest school building in San Mateo County, I think. Anyway, and it's now the Woodside School Library. Anyway, they did such a great job that we recommended that the town hire them for the town hall project. Chuck and Bob, like E-H-D-D as a whole, had a wonderful capacity of producing very high level architectural designs without imposing pre-baked architectural styles on their clients. The result in Woodside's case was the adaptive reuse of two local historical treasures into warm and humane settings for our public life. Steve and I thank them and the town for having had the opportunity to be part of this process. So we couldn't get you the link, so I'm just gonna hand out to.
For later reading, copies of the part linking history of the construction, if you're in that, it's a problem hall. And Chuck passed away in 1989.
Thank you.
He was quite a character and helped me very beautifully. He certainly worked for the.
Thank you, Thalia. It is certainly a wonderful legacy to great buildings that literally millions of people have, have walked through, or thousands in our case here, so thank you.
If, if you're at all interested architecturally, it's interesting that they took the design of this building and used it as inspiration for those buildings, and they angled them so it gives this building prominence. It doesn't copy this style, but it relates, and they did the same thing at the library. It's very subtle, but we thought it turned out, I hope you all agree, I think Town Center turned out great, so.
Thank you.
Thank you.
We have one hand up in the Zoom room, so we'll go to Mr. Wells. Mr. Wells, welcome. You may be muted. There you go.
Can you hear me all right?
We can.
Nice. I've previously come to meetings to kind of raise awareness, and we've had some other discussions around weekend traffic at four corners and predominantly, predominantly noise issues related to modified exhaust racing and the pure chaos at the intersection. With no crosswalks or crosswalks to nowhere, it's really just mayhem on the weekends, especially the summer, and we are getting into the great weather weekends, and it's getting worse. Just wanted to kind of re-raise, re-raise the issue. And one of the things I had raised in the past was, the town of Woodside now has cameras throughout the town, and the company that produces the cameras has a traffic analysis product that the town currently does not pay for, which is not that expensive per camera, but it would allow us to align enforcement activity, enforcement activity with the time that the traffic is the worst. And obviously, it's not just traffic, it's like, it's the worst offenders is the people who have effectively attached shotguns to the back of their cars. Anyways, we're getting into the summer months, beautiful weather on the weekends, and everyone knows who's close to 84, 35, and also down the hill, just how chaotic it is. So just wanted to re-raise the issue, and if the sheriff's here, I'd love to hear, you know, I don't know, maybe, I guess it's just a open mic, but I just wanted it to be kind of at the forefront and hopefully something that the town council would consider engaging with the sheriff directly to make sure that their patrolling activities is aligned with weekends. That's it.
Thank you very much, Mr. Wells. You know, we, just so you know, are in the midst of trying to finalize a contract, and within that is all about resources and deployment and enforcement, and so it's, we appreciate the comment, it's very timely, and also we appreciate the heads up on what the Flock safety cameras can do with monitoring traffic, which I'm sure we can look into as well. Thank you for that. Are there any other public comments? All right, hearing none, we will close public comment and move on to the town manager report. Jason.
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Mayor and the Woodside Town Council. This is Jason Ledbetter, the town manager for the town of Woodside, so I have a number of items just to briefly go over with the town council on. The sheriff's contract is still not solidified, as the sheriff's administration department has been in contact with me and is attempting to schedule a meeting for me. Unfortunately, I keep getting close to having a meeting scheduled, I had one tentatively scheduled and then canceled, but I was notified this morning that we're shooting for a 617 meeting, I'm just awaiting a confirmation, and so ultimately, we plan on bringing you the budget on 624, so it would certainly be lucrative for us to finalize or at least have this first meeting. Just to go along with the last public comment, I have had some people engage me over traffic concerns, and specifically, I had a conversation about weekend patrol with a member of the community. I will look into the Flock setup that might or might not be possible for us, but I ultimately have set up a bi-weekly meeting with the San Mateo County Sheriff's Patrol that works right out of our office, and we are talking every Thursday prior to a council meeting so that I can relay any communication to you, and then ultimately, I can go back and ask for very specified patrol. They're very, very reactive to what our needs are. I attended the Parents' Guide to E-Bike Safety for Youth webinar put on by the San Mateo County Office of Education yesterday. It was very informative and will help guide the staff report for the future study session on e-bikes. The town council is wanting to have either on 624 or 78, which is kind of looking more like 78 at this time, if I were to guess. I will be meeting with the superintendent of the Woodside Elementary School this Thursday with council member Wall as we discuss e-bike safety and the concerns and measures being taken by the local elementary school on this topic. On Wednesday, June 11th, I will be attending the budget reconciliation briefing put on by the office of Congressman Sam Licardo, and there should be an invite to each of you if you care to join that meeting tomorrow at 11:00. Today, I attended the San Mateo County Library JPA meeting in Atherton where we voted on the budget proposal and chose officers for the coming fiscal year. On the evening of 5/28, I attended the Livestock and Equine Heritage Committee meeting and the Planning Commission meeting as well. On Friday, May 30th, I toured the walk path from Roberts on Woodside to the elementary school with the Chair of the Circulation Committee, Hassan. We discussed the possibilities for the north side of that stretch to be a standalone project and the need to either have it part of the circulation in the TCAP that we're going to discuss later on this evening, or if it should be a standalone project. I met with Craig on Kite Hill to better learn about the incredible process he is utilizing to bring back the native flowers and grasses on the serpentine soils on Kite Hill, very spectacular. And then Yaz is working with the Fire District on some spot vegetation removal in the same area, and then finally, I've started meeting with each staff member here at, at Town Hall individually, just to better understand their roles and their career aspirations and create positive channels of communication. So that is my report for this evening. Thank you.
Thank you. Any questions from council on the town manager report?
Just a quick question, so on the sheriff's contract, so it sounds like, I just want to make sure I understand the current status, so it sounds like a first meeting is set to happen on June 17th, and then do you anticipate there will be negotiations after that with the subcommittee that's been tasked with negotiating the contract, and do we have a sense of like, when we think we will conclude that negotiation, and is there a deadline? Does our contract run out?
Yeah, those are great questions, and definitely, there is a deadline as far as 6:30 is the end of that contract. Unfortunately, I'm having a very difficult time getting a confirmed calendar date to have that initial meeting, and so there was one scheduled and then for today, and I'm moving anything off of my calendar to make it work, but ultimately, now they're proposing the 17th, but they'll propose a date and then they have to check with the sheriff herself to make sure that she is available, and so I'm waiting to hear back. And ultimately, yeah, the subcommittee is a part of the communication, I'm letting them know each time I do get a communication, they're getting an email from me, and I plan on sitting down with them prior to me meeting, and then ultimately, again, after we do meet to see if we can very quickly do a negotiation, or if this is going to be long and drawn out. I do feel confident that regardless, that we're going to have service on 71, regardless of where we end up. We have contingencies built into our budget proposal for you guys that will definitely cover this if we are negotiating in next fiscal year, come July 1st.
Gotcha. Just one follow-up question, because I think a quick negotiation might put us at a disadvantage. So have we explored, if we find ourselves where we want more time, could we put a quick extension in place for the contract to provide for a longer negotiation, if we, if we wanted to do that?
Yeah, that's a great question, and would be probably part of the very first engagement that I have with them, to validate at what price that would be, just to get an extension before we solidify the future pricing.
Okay, and then maybe a question for Jean, have you thought about that angle, like, would that be pretty simple from a, from a legal standpoint?
I think that, I think that would be pretty simple. Both parties are going to want a continuation of service here. Thank you.
On that regard, if I'm not mistaken, in the past, I'm going back, way back in the time machine here, we had the same issue, I think, with Don Horsley was the sheriff, and they just extended it, I mean, they, it was like a 90-day extension at the current rate, by the way, they just, there was no increase, just until we could complete the negotiations, it was a kind of a good faith gesture, just so you're aware of some history there, that I'm going back three sheriffs, four sheriffs ago.
I will let them know when we get the opportunity for that extension.
Okay, I think we'll close downtown manager report and move on to the consent agenda. All items under consent are considered routine and will be approved by one roll call motion unless a request is made at the beginning to all an item. Are there any consent agenda items that any member of the council would like to pull? Two? Four, okay. Item four, and I would like item six. Is there any, are there any consent agenda items that any member of the public would like to see pulled for further discussion? Okay. Can I get a motion for one, two, three, five?
I'll make the motion.
Councilmember Aberish.
Yes.
Councilmember Brown.
Yes.
Councilmember Gold.
Yes.
Councilmember Wall. Mayor Domkowski.
Yes, councilmember Wall, item four.
So item four is a res, in completion of the Kings Mountain Road, Woodside Road, and Cuyada Road, and Romero Road crosswalk. I'm really pulling this because I want to hear from Hassan, who's a member of the Circulation Committee, I think you had some comments you wanted to make, but before I turn the mic over to you, I'd just like to say, I've heard a lot of really positive feedback from District One residents about the Cuyada Road, Romero Road crosswalk, a lot of appreciation, in particular, from parents whose kids use that crosswalk, so I just wanted to pass that, that feedback along to the council, and then Hassan, do you want to say what you wanted to say?
Sure, thank you, councilmember Wall. Yeah, so I'm Hassan Frakonade, Chair of the Circulation Committee, I know most of you. Yeah, I think the project's been fantastic, again, same positive feedback from people, I've seen people using it quite a bit, and I think, you know, as much as we want Woodside to stay rural with the increased traffic we have and everything, it's a good, simple accommodation that increases safety, makes people feel more comfortable, and hopefully encourages people to walk and see their neighbors and talk to folks and run into folks, it's much easier to do that on foot than in a car, you know, some other vehicle, so. Overall, yeah, we're very happy to see it, I know that Circulation Committee has worked on it for a couple of years, so we appreciate the funding for it and the project getting done, thank you Yaz, thank you to Sean Rose, thank you to everybody else, so, yeah, very appreciative, and thank you very much.
Thank you. Would you like to make a motion on four?
I move to approve consent calendar item number four.
Councilmember Aberish.
Yes.
Councilmember Brown.
Yes.
Councilmember Gold.
Yes.
Councilmember Wall.
Yes.
Mayor Domkowski.
Yes. Item number six is resolution for FEMA authorization, and it mentioned in here that we have to renew every three years, but that we hadn't renewed since 2017, and so I, I don't know if I'm misreading this, that there was a lapse, or if there was just no change in authorized signers, or what, what am I looking at here, that in terms of being able to access funds from FEMA?
Yeah.
During COVID.
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Mayor, this is Jason Ledbetter, Woodside Town Manager. I would say that I will kick over to Yaz, but just before I do that, ultimately, just the change in, in leadership with the retirement of Kevin ultimately added a different signature onto the FEMA and state OES grant process, thereby requiring us to update this resolution, which we have an active project that they were currently allowing Kevin to sign on, and so my take would be that ultimately, they honored whatever current resolution was on hand, regardless of when that date happened, but in order for an email kicked to Mr. Bryant after his retirement from, I believe, either FEMA or OES, that then kicked back, that instigated with that office to make this change happen, but Yaz, if there's different information.
That is correct, and that was basically the impetus for this change.
Okay, thank you. With that, I will motion approval of consent item number six.
Councilmember Aberish.
Yes.
Councilmember Brown.
Yes.
Councilmember Gold.
Yes.
Councilmember Wall. Mayor Domkowski.
Yes, okay, moving right along to the main event tonight. Public hearing item A, resolution to appoint a community advisory committee for the Town Center Area Plan, and to update and/or confirm the boundaries for area of study, and Jason, I'm going to hand it off to you and the good people at Good City.
Yeah, thank you again, Mr. Mayor, so I am going to go ahead and introduce this topic, and I'm using some slides that I will have Mrs. Lee bring up for me now. These slides are really just to keep me on track, they're very brief so that I can introduce the staff report, and then at that time, I will kick it over to Troy from Good City, who will give you the actual presentation, and then ultimately, at that point, it'll be public hearing, and staff is here to engage any follow-up questions, but you're going to hear some redundancies in what I want to focus on, on giving you the introduction. So this first slide really spells out that the Woodside Town Council has two actions this evening, two possible actions to take. One is to approve and seat a community advisory committee, that you will see the acronym C-A-C used multiple times throughout the evening. So a community advisory committee will be tasked to advise the council on different aspects of the Town Center Plan, and then secondly, the council is asked this evening to approve a boundary that will be the determined area to be studied and planned for in order to create a Town Center Area Plan. Next slide, please. So what is the history here with the town of Woodside and a Town Center Area Plan? Well, what is it, and what does it address as well? So a Town Center Area Plan attempts to address design and guidelines of the Town Center concerning building, landscaping, signage, lighting, circulation, parking, land use, et cetera. And the town of Woodside first created a Town Center Plan back in 1970, so this process is not obscure or a new process that the town is embarking on currently. Next slide. So the Town Center Area Plan is a five-phase process, and tonight, we're just embarking on phase one. Again, the two requested actions for the town council to consider this evening are, one, to seat a community advisory committee, and two, to convert, confirm a boundary to the MAP Town Center Area Plan. Next slide. So how did staff determine its current recommendation to council? I know is a question that many folks are probably having with themselves right now, and so staff took an objective approach, and after working with their consultants, we determined first that our recommendation would be a committee roughly eight to 12 members, as this count had the highest level of deliverable success with prior communities and similar committees working on similar plans. Second, staff wanted property owners to make up a minority of the final committee, and each property was contacted for representation on whether or not they would be willing to be a part of a staff recommendation. Second, staff wanted to recommend a committee with some traits that would lead to obviously success, so we considered experience, we considered Brown Act knowledge, we considered history advising the town council, we considered history with productively working with the public, solving problems as a team, technical expertise in working on difficult subject matter were things that we were considering would be very good attributes of volunteers of a community advisory committee. Next slide, please. So when we compare the topics that the Town Center Area Plan will explore, such as land use, commercial space, parking, circulation, and the overall vision of the Town Center, and then when we consider the objective traits for our staff recommendations, such as the experience, Brown Act compliance, history advising council, working with the public, solving problems as a team, and the technical expertise, it became very clear to staff that we had an amazing pool of volunteers already engaged on these topics with the commissions, boards, and committees of volunteers here in the town of Woodside already. Next slide, please. So pretty much based off of that objective process is how we came up with the reasoning decided to follow with the volunteer commissions, boards, and committees. These would make great candidates, and it made sense to start with the chairs, and so ultimately, we have come up with the recommendation to seat the community advisory mission, committee with the planning commission chair and vice chair, as land use, zoning, and municipal code will obviously be areas of expertise needed to be successful with this project. We also decided the Chair of the ASRB, Circulation, Environment, and Open Space, and the prior Chair of Trails, based on the current Chair being unavailable. We then rounded that out to 10 with the addition of four stakeholders in Town Center that owned property that were interested in being part of this process. Next slide. So it's really important to me that I just clarify the process at how I came up, or how the staff came up with the recommendation, because I know ultimately, that'll be a large topic of conversation this evening, but we have a more thorough presentation, I'm now going to hand it off to Troy Reinhalter with Good City to take on the actual presentation of the Town Center Area Plan for the town of Woodside.
Jason, I'll wait a moment for the slides to come up here. You hear me?
Yeah, I can now, you think you got to get close to that one.
Right, I'll get nice and comfortable here. All right, so I'll go ahead and give the kind of brief 15, 20-minute overview presentation, which expands and builds on Jason's kind of high-level overview. So tonight, I'll be introducing the team that will be working on this plan update, I'll provide a brief overview of the existing plan, talk about the objectives and the purpose of updating the plan, describe their recommended plan boundaries that we're proposing and looking for approval tonight, walking through the planned community engagement, including the community advisory committee, which is a key focus tonight, then I believe we'll have some clarifying questions, public comment, and then council discussion and action. Next slide. Great, so the two actions we're looking for tonight are, I'll be providing the update, and then we'll be looking for confirmation of the membership of the community advisory committee, and then we'll be looking to confirm the updated area plan boundaries. Next slide, please. So now I'll just get into a little bit about the plan update effort, starting with the team that will be working on the project on behalf of the town of Woodside. So this slide illustrates kind of the key players involved in the plan update, starting at the top, we have, of course, planning commission and the STEAM Town Council, who will be the ultimate decision-makers for this process. Members of the public will be providing peak, Cree input and advice to the council and the planning commission through both the community advisory committee, but also through the various engagement activities we have planned and informal conversations with council. One level down, we have the town staff, who will be contributing their deep local knowledge and perspective. Finally, we have our consultant team of professional planners and technical experts, led by Good City Company, and our team also includes Urban Field Studio, Alta Planning, EPS, and David J. Powers. So, next slide, please. I'll introduce the team members that will be supporting the staff and the council in this effort, so on the top row, we have Aaron Aitken, who is the principal in charge from Good City Company, next you have myself, Troy Reinhalter, I'll be the overall project manager for this team, so Aaron and I will be managing, as well as Kevin Gardner behind me, will be managing the rest of the team, as well as leading land use and engagement-related efforts. Next, we have Jane Lynn and John Bala from Urban Field Studio, who will really be covering the urban design, landscape, architecture, and general architecture, and who will also support us on community engagement. On the bottom row, we have Tefi and Rice Evans, who will lead up economic and market analysis on behalf of EPS, while by Chee Sin Sau of Alta Planning will handle transportation and parking-related matters, and then Shannon George of David J. Powers, who will oversee environmental and sequence analysis. So when we say the Town Center, what do we mean by that? So the Town Center is really the heart of the town, it's, it's commercial hub, it's where community happens, where meeting and gathering happens, it's a series of intergenerational spaces that really speak to the whole town, the history and the charm of the town, so it really mixes that history, that charm, with the provision of daily needs and services, includes many businesses, a grocery, hardware store, restaurants, bakeries, post office, doctor, town hall, of course, we're in the town hall and in the Town Center here tonight. So to back up, the current adopted Town Center Area Plan, first drafted in 1970 as a kind of a, an element or a part of the city's general plan, so it's essentially a document of policies and design guidelines intended to guide changes and evolution in the Town Center over time. So it's been clear to this town and its residents for some time have recognized that the Town Center means a lot to this community, since we've already, you know, the town had already undertaken this process previously in the past. The area plan was amended in 1988 by Measure J, and, and again, Measure A, which was recently passed, is technically also an amendment to the area plan. Next slide, please. So why did this city, town, excuse me, look at the Town Center? The key goals of that original plan were to establish a clear vision for the Town Center, to identify which land uses best serve the community, to shape the evolution of privately-owned property alongside public capital improvements, to. of privately-owned property alongside public capital improvements, to streets, sidewalks, trails, and other physical infrastructure, and then to inform decisions that would be made about which developments might proceed or be entitled in the area. So again, as I mentioned earlier, the area plan is really sort of a sub-area element of the general plan. So it lives within the general plan, because the town saw that this area really was worthy of more detailed guidance than is generally provided in the more comprehensive general plan. And just as a reminder, the general plan is the town's sort of key, primary land use planning document meant to guide development, investment over a long period of time, typically 20 or more years. And so it was a requirement of, embedded within the recently adopted six-cycle housing element, that the town looked to update the area plan by the end of next year, 2026. And so the community and the council, in collaboration with our team, will all work together to decide to what extent potential new housing would be permitted within the plan area. So aside from it being a requirement of the housing element, why should we update this plan? And as far as we see it in the conversations we've had so far with staff, community members, key stakeholders, it's really a revisiting and a refreshing, reimagining of the vision for the Town Center, making sure it's still kind of valid and appropriate for this day and age. So we'll be collectively exploring as a community where and how the Town Center might be improved to really better serve the needs of the community. So to that end, we'll be refreshing the policy and the guidelines that are contained within the area plan. So the intent is to potentially offer more flexibility for property owners in the Town Center, if we all agree as a community that that is appropriate. But just to clarify, this is not a development project being led by the town. It's an update of a policy document. So the original plan, originally approved in 1970, so here we are, you know, 47 or so years later, again, looking at the Town Center. So what are we hoping to get out of this update? And so there was an attempt to update this plan in 2012, and I think we want to learn from that attempt and try to do things a little differently this time. So we really want to ensure that we're engaging effectively with the community, with the key stakeholders, especially property owners, business proprietors. We want to understand the long-term plans of those folks and plan accordingly. We want to take the community through a really deliberate phased approach that builds consensus gradually through a series of engagement activities and events. We want to stress that as a resident, you don't have to be on the CAC to be involved with this effort. We welcome you to participate through a number of avenues to share your feedback and opinions with us and with the council. And we feel that it's important that the concerns of this community be elevated over those of visitors as we go through this process. From kind of a content standpoint, the two topics of concern that have really been elevated so far are circulation and safety with respect to especially pedestrians, and then, of course, parking, which we've heard several times. So we'll be investigating, exploring potential improvements to the streets, sidewalks, trails in the area, and be looking to potentially find some creative solutions to the parking challenges, which we've heard much about. And then finally, we want to determine what the right land use mix is that would be allowed in the Town Center. So this would require us to understand and investigate, you know, emerging trends and commercial land use, the demand for, potential demand for different types of businesses. As I mentioned, as prompted by the housing element, we'll be discussing the interest, the feasibility, and the potential for new housing. Of course, keeping in mind the limitations imposed by Measure J. From a residential and commercial development perspective, we want to produce a plan that's in tune with the market so that it can be implemented and it's feasible. And then, of course, most importantly, we want to examine new ideas while keeping the really treasured rural charm and character that the Town Center currently has that's drawn so many folks to live in this community. So kind of looking out across the next two years or so, we, to achieve the objectives, we have five phases planned. We're right now in Phase One, which is really initiation, and then looking at trying to take stock of issues and opportunities, listening to stakeholders in the community. That will last through kind of the middle of the summer. Next phase, we'll move into, once we've kind of taken stock of the existing conditions and existing issues, we'll move into a visioning phase that will last through the summer through to the end of the year. We'll include a number of engagement activities that I'll touch on later. Phases three and four, more or less occur sort of concurrently. It's the drafting and the development of the plan update and the draft DIR. That will occur through sort of the next six months or so of 2026. And then we'll move into a review and adoption phase, where there'll be a number of public hearings, so towards the end of 2026. So now I'll go ahead and review the current boundaries and the proposed plan boundaries for the area. So you see on this slide here, the boundaries in yellow of the current Town Center Area Plan. You have Woodside Road running east to west, right through the middle of the area. On the western end, Woodside is bisected by Canyatta and Mountain Home Road. On the east side, you have the intersection with Whiskey Hill Road. The area plan includes all of the parcels that are immediately adjacent or fronting Woodside Road, plus the two parcels that were in here today that contain the Town Hall marked with a star on the map. So we understand that there's interest in looking at this boundary and updating this boundary. So, next slide, please. We've brought forward an amended recommendation for the area plan boundary. Again, in the yellow, you see the original plan area. In green, there are two areas that staff and the team are recommending be added. Marked with number one is the back half of the parcel that currently contains the bakery, the hardware store, the cafe, which is already planned for an expansion of the surface parking lot. Second addition, number two, is the westernmost portion of Woodside Road, also known as Highway 84, stretching down from the current end of the boundary all the way down to the elementary school. So we see that as a potential opportunity for some key multimodal improvements on that stretch of Woodside. So I'll just note that if there's interest and curiosity in more circulation enhancements that are sort of leading to the Town Center but are not technically within this boundary, we can still, our team can still explore those circulation improvements. So with respect to transportation, we're not necessarily limited by the boundary as much. The boundary is much more about the parcels for which we'll consider changes to land use regulations and building design guidelines. All right. Now I'll review the community engagement that we have planned for this update. So our engagement is based around a few key objectives. In order to reach a broad swath of the Woodside community, we are planning on offering a number of ways to participate in the process, which I'll touch on in a following slide. We intend to run a very collaborative process in partnership with the decision-makers, stakeholders, the residents, that is very transparent as far as the feedback we receive and how that is handled and how that feedback translates to the plan direction. And finally, we'll be prioritizing the local values and the local character in service of creating a comprehensive vision for the Town Center. So here are the activities that we have scoped for this project. Includes a series of stakeholder interviews with key members of the community, or pop-up events over two separate rounds. Those two rounds of pop-ups are accompanied, each one by an in-person community workshop, so a total of two in-person community workshops. The second one of those is accompanied by what we're calling a roadshow, where we have, will post informational materials in a public building, two online surveys, two informative videos, four meetings with the advisory committee, and four meetings with the Town Council. So what do we mean when we're talking about the Community Advisory Committee? So it's a group of residents and stakeholders and property owners that will be providing input and advice throughout the plan update process. They'll be acting really as a sounding board for key ideas and potential strategies or solutions. CAC will be giving feedback and guidance on key topics and also on potential engagement strategies and the content of that engagement. But just to clarify, the CAC will be making recommendations, but the council will be the one retaining the final decision-making authority. We want to really clearly establish the expectations for the CAC members at the start so that everyone's on the same page. We'll expect that members attend all four of our meetings or notify us if they're unavailable. We expect them to follow rules of, you know, good etiquette, mutual respect, respecting each other's times and opinions in the group. We'll ask them to review materials in advance so they're prepared for meetings. And we'll be looking for them to carry forth messages and ideas to their neighbors, their friends, and most importantly, their respective committees and organizations. And so by, as Jason mentioned, by leveraging folks on the committee who are already members of local boards, commissions, we believe we can really exponentially increase the level of community involvement in the plan update, since these folks will be sharing potential concepts out with other members of these boards and then be bringing back, you know, feedback and recommendations, suggestions from these bodies to the council and the team. When relevant, we expect members to, you know, declare conflicts of interest related to topics under discussion. And as Jason mentioned, this is a Brown Act body, so the members will be subject to open meeting regulations and prohibitions on serial meetings. We, as Good City, will be leading the CAC meetings. We'll be supported closely by Town Staff and the City Manager. We do not plan on having an appointed Chair of the CAC, so that all members are sort of on an equal footing. We'll be seeking at our meetings sort of a consensus direction, taking straw polls where we need to. But if and when there is a difference of opinion amongst members of the committee, we'll bring those differences and those varying sentiments forward to the council as we hear them. Meetings will be open to the public. We anticipate the comments from the public will be reserved for a specific moment or time on the agenda, most likely at the end of the CAC meetings. We hope that we can limit this time for public comments, not to, you know, deny the public their input, but only so that the CAC can be given the appropriate time and space to deliberate and talk amongst themselves, so that it is really a working meeting for the members of the CAC and not a public workshop, which we do have also planned separately. But again, the public will be allowed to attend all CAC meetings. And now I'll read out briefly the list of the CAC members, which was included as an attachment to your staff report. So we have Lyle Weaver, the Chair of the PC, Matt Gahr, the Vice Chair of the PC, Don Lindsay on the ASRB, San Farande, the Circulation Committee Chair, who we heard from previously. We have Barry Cool on the Trails Committee, Sue Sweeney-Burrow on the Environment and Open Space Committee Chair. And then we have four property owners, Richard Erstad, Leanne Gilbert, Christine Roberts, and Patricia Delgavio, who's also on the ASRB. So that concludes my presentation. And just as a reiteration, we're looking for council to take two key actions tonight, review and confirm that list of CAC members, and then review and confirm the area plan boundaries. With that, I'll turn it back over to the Mayor and Jason.
Okay. Well, thank you very much, both of you, for really well-organized and graphically engaging presentations. Questions for staff? Anybody want to kick things off? Jen, would you like to go first, Jen? Okay.
So, yeah, so I definitely have a series of questions, some for staff, I think, some for Troy. Thank you so much for the presentation. It was very informative. So my first question is about conflicts, and maybe you could flip to slide, I think it's slide 22, because I want to take a look at what's said on that slide before I ask my question. Maybe it was the slide before that? Anyway, it doesn't matter, because you mentioned in your presentation that members of the Community Advisory Committee would be obligated to avoid conflicts. And so I just wanted to maybe understand, like, how could a conflict arise for a citizen Advisory Council member? What would be an example of a conflict?
Sure. So I think what we would be talking about is, in the case of a property owner, if you're looking to make a decision about a change in allowed land use or development intensity on that, on the property owned by a member of the committee, we would ask that the committee member, you know, make that known and make that clear to the members of the committee so that it's sort of open and transparent about what any potential actions might have as potential gain or impact on their ownership of property. I think that's what we're really talking about.
So they'd be obligated to declare a conflict, but they wouldn't be obligated to step out of the conversation?
I think that's a good question. I think we can take that in-house and discuss that as part of the CAC for best practice on that matter.
Maybe.
We can look to Jean.
Looking over to Jean. Jean, do you have thoughts on this? Like, how would conflicts be handled by the CAC?
I think when you have, when all the members of the CAC are having general conversations about land use policy, I think that's fine. But if we're talking about a specific site and it is owned by a particular person, I would probably recommend that for that portion of the discussion, that individual recuse.
Okay, so kind of just playing this out. So if, for example, we were talking about any land use issue, maybe any parking adjustments, would it really be anything related? Say we were talking about that in relation to the area outside the door here, outside of Town Hall. If Leanne Gilbert was on the CAC, would she need to recuse herself?
I think if we're talking about Ms. Gilbert's property, I would recommend that she, that she recuse. So let me do a little deeper dive into that and see how broad I think that recusal should be, and be happy to share that with you and to chat with the members of the CAC about that as well.
Okay, thank you. And then, maybe another legal topic, it's the, I'm wondering about the Brown Act compliance. So can you help me understand what is it about the way the staff has recommended the setup of the CAC that would require Brown Act compliance?
It is, it is a committee appointed by the council, and under the Brown Act, there's advice given that if it's appointed by resolution of the council, even if it's a limited-term committee or commission, it should be Brown acted. And I think we also made that recommendation because we wanted to promote transparency and public engagement.
Yeah, got it. If, I'm just playing this out, if we were to decide that, you know, the Brown Act requires, you know, a lot of compliance, it requires, you know, yeah, like we said, notice and open meetings, and in some ways might go against the spirit of the advisory committee, which is to really, you know, engage as many people as possible and to have an open flow of ideas. What, what could we do to set this up so that it doesn't require Brown Act compliance? Like, what would that look like?
I don't recommend that you set it up not to comply with the Brown Act, but I don't think that means that you can't have a free flow of ideas and a very fluid sort of meeting. It just means that you will need to post agendas and advise the public where and when the meetings are occurring, what topics will be discussed, so they'll know and can attend if they choose to do so.
No, I get the recommendation, but let's just say we wanted to set it up in a way that didn't require Brown Act compliance. Like, how would we do that?
I don't think you can do that.
Okay, so we absolutely are required to set up the CAC so that it complies with the Brown Act?
It is my opinion you should do that, yes.
Because I know, I'm, again, trying to think of an example, but it's not coming to mind. I know the council has set up informal committees in the past that didn't need to require, to comply with the Brown Act. So in general, how does that work?
So in general, the best advice is when the council by resolution establishes a subcommittee, even if it's a limited-term subcommittee, there is advice from the Attorney General that that be a Brown acted committee.
Can the council establish committees not by resolution?
You have done that in the past. There have been times when the mayor, I don't recall any time recently, but in the past where the mayor has appointed a couple of members, say, of the, of the council to meet and make recommendation back.
Okay. But I'm hearing your recommendation is this would absolutely need to be set up in a way to comply with the Brown Act?
Yes, the CAC, yes.
Okay. Okay. And then maybe, Troy, going back over to you. Where does, in your vision of this, where does Measure J fit in? And maybe you can, you know, feel free to kind of give an explanation of what Measure J was and how it currently applies to this process. And then, you know, if the town were to decide that it wanted to pursue a path that involved putting a ballot measure on, you know, a ballot in an upcoming election, where do you see that fitting in? Like, which phase of the process would that occur?
Yeah, so I think that's a key consideration that we should have, that we should daylight and discuss as we go through this process, understanding the pros and the cons of potentially changing Measure J, kind of feeling out where the community and the decision-makers are on potentially moving towards a ballot measure. I think ultimately that would be, if we do move in that, you know, in the direction, there would be a sort of an implementation or a recommendation of the plan to move ahead with a ballot measure to do that. I don't think we're by any means making any pre-decision to do, to go there. I think we want to let this process play out and have that discussion honestly and earnestly with the CAC at our engagement activities and see, and be transparent about it and, and kind of just play it out and see, you know, what would it mean to, to change Measure J, to remove that, you know, de facto sort of one-story height limitation on buildings in the town center? Whether that would be something that would, would benefit the town center, perhaps provide more vibrancy and more activity, but perhaps downside of, you know, more, more traffic, more parking need. So I think we'd have to look at the pros and the cons, present those at various engagement activities, think about it through our visioning process, and then kind of dig into it as part of our analysis.
Okay, can you flash up the slide that shows the phases?
Sure.
Maybe kind of in each phase of the schedule and work plan, can you describe for me how the topic of Measure J fits into each phase?
Sure. So in the first phase, we're kind of looking to understand as a team of experts what Measure J does, how it's impacted the stakeholders in the project area, kind of the history and the background of Measure J. We'll be looking to kind of look at the existing conditions of, you know, what are the current building heights? Where are the current FARs? What are the current land uses that are occurring in the area? So the first phase is kind of information gathering and listening. Then in the visioning phase, where we'd have a number of CAC meetings, we'd have our first round of pop-ups and a workshop. We'd be, you know, putting out the idea of kind of asking for opinions on that, kind of feeling out where folks are in terms of their willingness to engage in changes to Measure J. It would be like, like a visioning stage is very open and kind of looking for in, input on whether that's a direction we should go in. Then next phase, based on what we hear in that visioning phase, which would be concluded by a meeting with Town Council to kind of present our proposed vision, looking for buy-off from the council. Then depending on the direction of that vision and the confirmation from council, that would then spill over into the next phase where, from the plan side of things, we would potentially craft new policies, new design guidelines and standards in the plan itself that would reflect potential changes. Perhaps we could prepare a set of possible changes that would be enabled by a new change to that measure that would be sort of reflective of loosening of those regulations. Then the environmental review could, would be examining potential impacts, you know, to parking, circulation, aesthetics, resources that could be impacted by a change to that measure. You know, I might have changes to the, you know, additional need for transportation, additional need for, you know, resources, utilities, et cetera. Those things would be looked at as part of the draft environmental review. And then in the final stage, we'd be kind of vetting the updated plan with this council and with the various bodies and the CAC. And then after, if, if we're moving in that direction, then at the conclusion of this process, we could consider, the Town Council and the city manager, Town Manager would consider the appropriateness and timing of potentially moving towards a ballot measure. But again, we're getting ahead of ourselves, I think, a little bit there.
Gotcha. So when you say the draft environmental review, is that specific to Measure J? Or, or a scenario where height restrictions have been removed? Or is that, like, can you, or not? Is that, like, environmental review for what exactly?
Right, so, so the way SEQA works is that we would look at, and a couple of things. We would look at a possible envelope of changes. So in this case, we would probably be more expansive and say, consider a scenario in which Measure J was, was changed or lifted. And that would be sort of the top end of the impacts that we would study. So you'd kind of look at this higher level of potential impacts that would be, you know, more buildings, more traffic, more people, more impacts in the town center area due to a potential change to Measure J. We would also have one or more alternatives that were lesser impacts and would consider perhaps no change to Measure J. So you'd have a, a range of impacts that you could look at. That was, those would be, you know, vetted through the public review process. And then council would have the opportunity to, of course, select the alternative that they're willing to move forward with. So basically, we'd kind of be laying out a menu of alternatives or options that could range from a change to Measure J to no change to Measure J, perhaps with something in between. And then the council would kind of make a decision based on an understanding of the community's sort of sentiment, the impacts that we're uncovering through that analysis, whether or not it's appropriate to kind of recommend going forward with some kind of change like that.
All right, so just want to make sure. So you're saying we would have, it should actually be a draft EIR?
Yes.
That, the town, and I forget how EIRs work. So the town approves the EIR. And then does it go to the state or how does?
It gets routed to them, but the council is the, is the.
The council will make the decision. The council certifies the.
So you're envisioning a, like, sort of a, during this 2026 year, sort of a forked EIR that says if we're in a scenario where Measure J restrictions remain in place, here's our EIR and here's option B scenario where Measure J goes away or is altered in some way. And do you foresee there being an issue where, I mean, those are two, could be two pretty different scenarios. Do you envision there being some logistical issues with an EIR like that, which is, you know, like, scenario A, scenario B?
No, so, and, and I'm not the SEQA expert, so I don't want to preclude the, the analysis. But that is, that is the typical way that SEQA plays out, is that you look to a high end of impacts and then a low end of impacts. And you are comparing essentially the performance of those options from an environmental standpoint on a series of resource topics, on the, the aesthetics, the transportation, the history of the area. And then you're evaluating whether those alternatives, how they perform with respect to the project objectives, which could be, you know, increase the economic vitalization of the town center. And in that case, a change to increased development would perform well. You could also have an objective such as, you know, maintain the historic nature and the current sightlines of the town center. In that case, a lesser alternative would perform better. So, but just to back up, it's, it's quite typical and quite usual and required by SEQA to have sort of the, often the preferred project and then a series of lesser alternatives. You can choose, and we can go this, we'll, we'll get to this road eventually with our SEQA folks, whether to sort of study an alternative at an equal level to the preferred alternative or whether you study those at sort of a lesser level. So we'll, I think we'll bring that discussion forward when we get to that time. But it's, it's not unusual. It's quite typical to have a, a range of alternatives that you look at through SEQA.
Okay, thank you. And then a question for either you, Troy, or Town Staff, because I'm not sure who has the information. But it came up in at least one of the emails that we received on this topic tonight regarding the plan boundary. And one of the questions was, well, you know, why not include, for example, all the way down Woodside Road to the Little Store? And then equally, why not extend east down Woodside Road to include the town-owned site of Village Hill? And then even potentially the, the undeveloped site next to that, which did come up during our housing element conversation. So wondering if those additional parcels have been considered?
Yeah, I would say, this is Jason Ledbetter, the Town Manager. I would say that we took a conservative approach just based off of the last boundary that was utilized in the town center area plan. And this is my personal take, is that ultimately it's malleable and we were looking for guidance from the Town Council on an expansion beyond a conservative approach that we felt the two additions needed to be in there. But I'll kick it to Sage if you have any follow-up on that.
No, I, I think Jason just hit it. Is, you know, yes, it's possible to go further east. And then, you know, looking at the fire station, the school, the library, you know, it was something that was talked about and looked at. And the real question was, do those kind of civic uses need to be part of this policy document? Really what we realized was the big issue is connectivity, and that's why we focused on it, right?
Sure, makes sense. Okay, final question for now. The presentation alluded to, a, a big part of it is about community engagement. It referenced conducting some online surveys, which I would say has not been something the town has done much in the past. So wondering what the plan is there? Because I think these would be important surveys. So want to understand, you know, what survey tool are we contemplating? How are we going to make sure it reaches the resident community? Just any, any early thinking on that?
Yeah, I think this is a great one for a deliverable from Good City. And Troy can follow up on this?
Yeah, so we've done, and I've done, online surveys in a number of communities for a number of different projects and plans. We've used a number of different tools. One of the more common ones is Survey Monkey, which is sort of just a browser-based, you know, click your answer. You can, obviously, it's a, it's a mixture of usually multiple choice, free response, where you can type in your responses and they're kind of summarized by us as the team. We could also potentially use a map-based functionality, if that's something that we feel would be productive and complimentary to this effort, where people could click a site and, you know, kind of leave a note for us. So the, the format can, can be discussed, but generally it's an online test with, with, it's voluntary, that's opt-in, usually not too long to encourage a high-level response. As far as distribution, usually we like to do a number of methods posted on the project website. The town maintains an email list, so it'd be blasted out via sort of a stakeholder interest list. We'll ask the CAC to distribute it. And then, of course, in the city's newsletter, we could share it there. But then also importantly, we usually like to coincide the survey. And in this case, we have it planned to coincide with our first phase of in-person workshops. So at a pop-up, you might have a flyer with a QR code, so you could take that survey easily via the pop-up. And that helps to drive people towards the survey. And often, if we don't get the response we're looking for, we'll republize it again or hold it open for longer to make sure that we get an adequate response rate.
Thank you. No, no further questions.
Other questions for staff or consultant? Yes, Mr. Brown?
I'd like to follow up on the question about conflict. I think it's really important here. Would we consider it a conflict if a member of an advisory committee, such as Circulation Committee, maybe the Trails Committee, is, is voting on, within committee, voting to do something? Whether it's to improve the roadway near their home, improve a trail near their home or that they write on? It's an advisory committee. They're not voting to actually do it. That vote comes to the council. Is that advisory role considered a conflict of interest also?
I, I would have to ask what advice is being given at those committee meetings. I, I would think that would present a conflict of interest. I'm not sure how, and I can follow up on that.
Well, typically, a committee, for example, Trails Committee or Circulation Committee, will discuss a project, come to conclusions that they believe is the right way they want to move forward, voted as a committee. And if they're in favor, or the majority is in favor, they then come to the council and say, we think this should be done. They don't actually make it happen. They simply could.
Making a recommendation is your point, yes.
Yeah, so that's the kind of conflict of interest I'm wondering about because I don't see how this committee is recommending to the council is any real different on that concept than our Circulation Committee, all our committees.
Yes, I take your point. And what I would like to do is take a look at some advice letters from the FPPC on this exact point before the CAC starts meeting so that I can give them some knowledgeable advice about what, what, how recusals will need to occur and when they'll need to occur. I'll make sure I share that with, with the council as well.
Thank you.
Great. Other questions? Yes, Councilmember Apresh?
Yeah, I had a question about the recusal process also. Slightly different. So I'm having a hard time understanding. I feel like the most important person usually, like, if we're discussing, you know, Roberts Market or something like that, changes there, I would think that Christina Roberts would be one of the most important people to talk to. So I'm not sure, how, how does that work out if she's, if she has to recuse herself from that discussion?
Yeah, and that's what I want to look at, some AG opinions and some FPPC letter opinions about, because I'm sure there've been some issued when citizens advisory committees have been put together before. Because this is a pretty typical process for cities to go through, get plans of this nature. And this is just a recommending body, as Councilmember Brown said. They won't be making a decision. But I really would prefer to look at those letters before I speculate for you. I'd like to give you an informed opinion.
Thank you.
And then another question. I know that there's currently, you know, we approved, the council approved the Roberts Market parking area. And I understand that there's currently a pending lawsuit. How does that impact this process?
I don't think it really impacts this process because what you're looking at here is at policy determinations and, and broader planning issues. That's, that's a one-off project that's, again, being challenged right now in litigation.
So can we still, I mean, is, is there any limitation to making recommendations for changes to that project? Or will that be part of the, of the scope of this?
The project itself won't be your, this is really looking at, and I should probably defer to the consultants, but this is really looking at bigger policy issues and determining appropriate land uses from a planning perspective as opposed to looking at a particular project. I think one of the slides said this, this is not a development project. This is really a, a planning, visioning process.
Yeah, and I think, so I guess with, with that in mind, and I, I hear your point. I think I just see as, on the map, that part of the green part portion is that part. And so if we're talking about, like, is, is the, it feels like we're, there's going to be a recommendation on what to do with that area at the same time that it may be being constructed and developed. So how does that play out?
Thank you. I think that ultimately you can look at some other caveats that there's circulation concerns on how you walk from that area or if that we do move forward and if, if that actually does the court see things that particular way, that ultimately that would inevitably be a part of the town center itself, right? We would start to view it in that fashion. And so ultimately, that's why staff recommended it be in there because ultimately, action was taken by this body to make that determination that ultimately kind of expands town center with that decision that was ultimately made. And now we're just waiting to see what happens with the legal side of this case. But when you're looking at from a high level, you're not talking about specifically altering any decision that was made in the past on that property. That's a one-off project. You're looking at all of the other determinations as to access to that location and really circulation from my standpoint on how you get from that point over to ultimately maybe other parts of the interconnectedness of town center as a whole. Because that seems to me, for someone who walks every single day over in that area, we have a beautiful town center, we have a very difficult interconnectedness to get from Roberts literally over to. from Roberts literally over to Bucks. And so ultimately, you put into play a hypothetical parking lot and how that all fits would be kind of more of the 30,000-foot view, in my opinion, but if Troy has another opinion.
I think that's well stated. I think we see that that parcel is a natural part of the town center, given how it sits right behind the bakery and it contributes to the town center. It's also essentially part of the same parcel that the front part sits in, so it probably should have been part of the town center all along. It's not sort of best practice to split parcels when you do business like this. But I think Jason hit it on the head, it's more not about making any adjustments to this specific approved entitled project, but rather what guidance from a design or policy standpoint might be generally applied to it. Circulation, lighting, parking policy that might expand throughout the town center that we might want to involve that property in that parcel as well, but without going back on the decision that was made previously on that project itself.
Thank you.
Mayor Protam, anything you want to throw into the mix?
Of course. First, thank you for the work you put into this. By the way, you look nothing like your picture in that slide, but very nice job. And I also wanted to thank the volunteers on this, it was mentioned in the staff report for agreeing to serve. This is a huge project. Some very specific questions though. What's a pop-up? That came up a few times.
Yeah, great question. A pop-up can take a number of forms, but most commonly it is the attendance of our team or and/or staff at an ongoing event such as, you know, a farmer's market or May Day or another rodeo event where we set up a table or a tent and we have informational materials, we might have flyers, links to a survey, we'll have staff there at the table or tent and we'll be looking to engage folks already naturally out at an event. So we're, quote unquote, popping up, sort of showing up at an event to give folks an opportunity who wouldn't necessarily directly or intentionally come to a workshop, but who happened to be in the area, in and around the town center and might see this installation that we have and become interested in the project or share an opinion that they had that they hadn't previously had an opportunity to share. So it's sort of an informal engagement that tries to really meet people out in the community where they're already doing stuff.
And these take place during that visioning task, which was essentially the second half of this year.
Yeah, we have two rounds of pop-ups. So there would be two pop-ups in the visioning to kind of take stock of what people think about the town center, what are some of their ideas, what are some of the no-gos? Then there would be a second round of two more pop-ups when we get into more of a concrete vision of sort of, this is what we think we're going to be moving towards, what do you think about the ideas that we're proposing here? So it's kind of a two-phase.
So is this driven by the CAC? In other words, do they determine how many, where, when?
No, they will be, we'll be looking to the CAC for input in terms of like, what are good events that you all would suggest we go to? Where would we do well in this community? How can we reach this community effectively? It's more about the strategy. The number of pop-ups is set by kind of the agreed-upon scope of the project, but we'll be looking to the CAC to guide us and help us maximize and do the best job we can.
Yeah, the reason I mention this is that, you know, it's going to roughly start the end of the quarter, the end of this, you know, roughly September, October, something in that timeframe and run for about six months or so. It'd be nice to capture the school, it'd be nice, I mean, there's a big audience in certain places, our shopping centers, et cetera. So I, it'd be nice not to be limited by that if that's, I mean, I know that that's part of the contractual agreement with your firm, but I think that we should be, I mean, I think if we could get more community input here, you want that engagement, title of the slide we're looking at.
Yeah, sure. I mean, we're always open to direction of council to do more.
So that, I mean, we could if we wanted to.
Yeah.
It's a price adjustment, I would assume.
Absolutely, but that's the direction that we're always looking to hear from council is, should we do more engagement to be more effective and more successful?
Okay. On that map that Hassan mentioned, of the center which is outlined in yellow and then you've got the two green annexes, if you will, I'll wait for that to appear here. There you go. So I noticed that the yellow includes parcels. One includes the parcel, which is essentially the open area, which is going to be that. But number two is a street. And I think it was just pointed out that, in fact, I think Sage pointed it out, that going down that street includes the elementary school, the fire station, the library. I mean, there's a lot of, you know, the village hub, there's a lot of very public, some government buildings, some private, but there's a lot of public buildings there. But I also noticed that it didn't include parcels as you went down there. And I, you know, the yellow includes private parcels too. Was there a reason for that?
Yeah, I think we were unclear as to the sort of the real rationale for including parcels outside of the traditional town center. If we feel like there is a very clear and specific reason for doing that in terms of land use changes or regulatory changes, then we would be open to that input. But I think what we were looking at was a more focused effort that really tries to stick to what folks really experience as the town center. You know, we could always have a policy or two that pertained to something outside of the area, but I guess I would ask what would be the objective in including civic parcels outside of the town center unless they are kind of directly interfacing or serving the town center would be my question.
Land use changes. So I mean, I feel pretty strongly about extending it, but that's a deliberation, not a question. Correct myself there. So I asked about the boundaries here because the two issues before us are the boundaries really and the CAC composition. So I think the boundaries, we, I think once we hear the public input, we can kind of get back to that. I sort of tipped my hand there a little bit about, I think more comprehensive is better for reasons I'll get into during deliberations. Let's talk about the CAC composition for a second. I heard Councilmember Wall who's making some points about either conflicts of interest or the composition, I won't put words in her mouth, I've done that before to my detriment. So let's, let's talk about it. I like the idea of a smaller committee. Can you give a little bit of, shed a little bit of light about, I mean, there were some numbers thrown around 10 to 12 and one was, I think, 8 to 12, something like that. Just how does that work? Well, our last committee was very big and I think that that may have been part of the issues that were, that led to its downfall. But if you could comment on, I mean, you want to get as much input as you can on the same thing, you lose some efficiencies, I would assume.
Yeah, that's right. I think we have 10 right now and we threw out 10 to 12 as a potential kind of range. In my experience working on a number of area plans and then I've done a number of general plans, those tend to be a little bit larger because you're trying to look at the whole city. But in this case, we have a pretty focused area with a smaller sort of range of topics and you're trying to strike a balance between getting a diversity of opinions and experience into the committee without necessarily being inefficient with sort of the time and the discussions, the deliberations that you want to have. Because ultimately, the goal, not necessarily is to have one mind out of the CAC, but the goal is to seek a clear recommendation or recommendations that can be brought forth to council. So the objective is to try to be in service of informing the council of the direction that we should take. And so when you get too large, you start to have meetings that are too long and are too unfocused. And so there's sort of a balance that you have to strike there. And we feel around 10 to a dozen people is kind of the right, the right.
So that's a perfect segue to my last question. Can you talk a bit about the CAC meeting structure? And I'm asking this for a very specific reason, which I think is important to at least preamble my question, postample my question with a couple of comments. And that is, we believe public engagement is critical here. And yet you mentioned that during the CAC meetings, that public comment would be sort of at the end and limited to two or three minutes each. And that seems in conflict with getting a lot of input. I mean, if it's a Brown Act, we should, we could have a public discussion on literally every agenda item that they have. Yeah, and I can see your face making that, yeah, hey, we live with this stuff. I mean, and that's, that's it. You're paid, well, actually, we're paid for it too now, so. The, but I think that I'm very concerned about public engagement here and I could take it either way. I think as long as there's a lot of public engagement available, but when I heard that, it sounded somewhat limiting to me and I just, you mentioned workshops and you mentioned the CAC meetings and can you talk about the structure and how those work? And how do we ensure that we're hearing from members of the public? This is the biggest thing we've done since the general plan.
Yeah, no, it's a great question. And this is, we want to find, again, the right balance here. I think when, so when we hold a CAC meeting, we'll have an agenda that's publicized per Brown Act, will be posted online so the public can be aware of meeting, the meeting contents. We could, of course, we could consider having more opportunities for public comment at the CAC. I've seen it done at the beginning and at the end, so that folks have an opportunity to sort of speak on the agenda and then at the end, based on what they've heard at the meeting. I think that the balance here is that we've asked members of the community to be volunteers and give their time to the CAC and lend their expertise to the CAC. And we want to honor and respect their time and their knowledge by dedicating the bulk of those four activities, events to them while we have a wide range of other events, the pop-ups, the workshops, surveys, council meetings, other boards and commissions. So you have a wide range of other opportunities where the public can come and at a workshop or at a pop-up, they can speak, you know, freely without, with little constraint on their input and we're hoping that they do. I think we just, we're hoping that the CAC is a bit more focused on the members of the committee who have been sort of handpicked by staff with clear and deep reasoning to provide a slightly different type of input that is focused more on a clear set of recommendations. So it's a, it's a balance. But I think if we, if the CAC meeting turns into a public workshop, effectively you don't really have much of a CAC anymore because the members might feel that they are no different from a member of the public in that venue. And the idea is that we have asked them for a reason to kind of work together as a group to come up with some direction for us. And so while we do want them to talk to their friends and neighbors and listen to the members of the community and engage with the members of the community, I think those four or however many we do events, we want to be a little more guardrails about how we balance the general public with the members of the committee.
Is that, I said, that was my last question and I, as usual, deceived you. What, so the structure of the CAC, is it going to have a chair?
No, we would, we've, I've seen that done in certain projects in the past, that we find that it's more effective to have all members kind of equal.
Equal.
Equal input. We, Good City will lead the meeting so that it's sort of a neutral party. We expect that, you know, Jason or Sage would be there to have an ear to the ground from the staff side and to be, you know, show their, you know, kind of interest and participation in the project, but our recommendation is that we do not have a chair.
So you and your firm run the meeting?
Yeah, that's right.
Okay. I didn't know, thank you for those answers.
Sure.
Great. And maybe just to piggyback off that, I didn't love that bullet point on public comment either, particularly if we're going to go with an efficiently structured committee. Can we, we can just give direction that on an agenda-by-agenda item point that there would be public comment called for, correct? I mean-
Yeah, you can give us that direction. I think, again, we just want to be sensitive to the CAC is-
Yep.
With respect to-
Okay.
The balance.
And the flip side of this, if we're less efficient, if you will, and I don't know if we're going there tonight or not, and maybe this is a Gene question, but if the council wanted to add additional representation, either community members at large or property owners that may have been missed and so forth, what would be the best way to sort of go about that? Can we appoint a subcommittee? What, that subcommittee can make decisions and bring it back or do you have any thoughts on that? I'm not advocating for that. It's just based on some of the commentary we've received, I just wanted to ask the question.
Yes, I think you could appoint a subcommittee to interview interested individuals and then bring back a recommendation to the council, to the full council, if you wanted to increase the size.
Okay. And we all received one email from one stakeholder who is a property owner that we may have missed and do you, we have any thoughts on that specific individual who would, has expressed an interest in serving the community as a primary stakeholder, but somehow did not make it onto the list tonight?
Yeah, that was, this is Jason Ludbutter, the town man. That was, an oversight on some level is that we had representation from that particular property. And then once the agenda was posted at that point, I really made the determination that we were not going to make any changes, but ultimately if that information was known to staff prior to the agenda being posted, we would have already made the recommendation to add that individual.
Okay, thank you. And this is a big if, so this is a consultant question, but again, if we did go down this path, what are the process impacts to that calendar you showed? Because this would take another two or three months to do, just the way it all works out. So what are the impacts on cost, timing? What is the offset?
So I think there is a goal of including this by the end of next year. So everything we kind of do out front potentially jeopardizes that goal, but on the other side, I think it probably, in my opinion, a higher priority to get this right. So, you know, depending on how fast we move with any changes to the CAC, it might push us out a month or something like that. I don't know that there would be much of a significant change to cost. And so I think we'd be looking to council's direction on the membership. I think we do want to keep it smaller rather than larger, but we're open to input on a couple additional members if we feel that's important.
Great, thank you. Any other questions for staff on the council? Sure, Jen.
One quick one. So just from a process standpoint, I think you, Mayor, alluded to what would the process be if we wanted to continue the topic of the CAC and evaluate additional potential applicants? I'm wondering like if, just what did the staff envision the process for this evening? Would it be that the council votes on the proposal, a yes, a yes-no vote? But procedurally, what was the action you were envisioning?
Yeah, the action really was open-ended. Ultimately, it really is the responsibility of the town manager to have a recommendation through staff on pretty much every item that comes towards or to the town council. And so ultimately, we had a recommendation knowing that it was hypothetically could be altered because it is just a recommendation and ultimately you are the deciding body. That's really a question for our town attorney. Sometimes when you have a resolution that's already posted in an agenda and you want to make material changes, ultimately you may have to come back for another meeting before you make those changes in one swooping motion tonight. Or periodically, there's opportunity where the intent of that resolution is being added to and hypothetically, you can move forward this evening. So it's relatively open-ended, but from staff's perspective, it is our responsibility to bring you the most responsible and what we think is ultimately a successful plan. And that's what we've brought to you this evening.
Okay, so you're looking for us to vote yes, no, or vote on the deliver, on the resolution?
Not necessarily. We're advising you that we think it's a well-thought-out and planned. and planned, but ultimately, we are open to any type of changes that this council ever wants to make. We, I work at the direction of the council, and I agree with Troy that this is a very important step. So ultimately, if you feel, or the council as a whole, obviously, feels that they need to take more time, then that would be the appropriate determination.
And maybe just for clarity, I, I'm not pushing for continuation. I, I think we have a lot we can build on tonight, and, and maybe more that we can do.
Yeah, no, I didn't mean to imply that you were pushing for that. Just was building off your question related to whether or not a advisory committee could be established.
Okay, I think we're going to move on to public comment. So members of the public that would like to speak on the issue of the Town Center area plan, and the Citizen Advisory Committee and boundaries, the floor is yours. Welcome, Mr. Lubin.
Steve Lubin, Palm Circle. I think the, the proposed committee is, is, the way it was selected has really missed an opportunity to engage people who have done their decades of service on the Planning Commission and the ASRB and committees, and have a particular interest in, in Town Center. And there's, there was no opportunity for those, those of us who are fit that role, you know, to apply for this committee or be considered. And also, as far as the area of the plan, it, it seems like just having the road is really missing an opportunity. It, it might be, it seems premature to nail down the area that's considered, especially not including the lots along by the school. But it, it seems like maybe the, you know, considering housing especially, that we may change our, as we investigate this, we might change our idea of, of what area should be included, and I think that should be left open.
Right. Steve, as long as I have you, you served on the committee 12 or 13 years ago.
That one and two before that.
Yeah. Maybe as a word of wisdom, tell us why you think it didn't work out 12 or 13 years ago. What were the failings that we should, the pitfalls we should try to avoid this time?
The, the council had no balls. Actually, the committee did a lot of good work, and people came out and, and, and yelled loudly, and they folded, and, and told the committee members to go suck eggs.
All right. Keeping it real, Mr. Lubin. Mrs. Lubin.
I, I was on that committee as well. It was, it was, first of all, it was too big of a committee, and just, again, by way of history. It, it was, Jackie Young led it, and it was, it was just really, we were, it was great. We had a lot of great ideas, and every, there were different subgroups, and Steve's, both Steve and I were on it, and Steve's subgroup came up with an idea, and unfortunately, he put it down on paper because he was so excited about it. And Jackie got very excited about it, and brought it to the meeting. And it was half-baked, I guess. The pitchforks came out, it was wall-to-wall people, and they didn't understand it, and, and the council meeting went badly. I won't name names, but it was just badly administered. And everybody left pissed off, and the whole thing fell apart. And for weeks later, I would see people at Roberts', and they'd say, oh, you were part of that, and you were, and I said, do you understand what happened? They tried to tell me, and they, they couldn't explain it. And I said, well, you missed the two-story ammonia plant behind Roberts', and they'd go, so clearly, you know, it was just flaming the flames, or whatever. So I, I, I don't know about a bigger committee, but I do know there, and I'm not advocating for myself, but I am advocating for Steve Lubin and Steve Patrick, who have been on the Planning Commission, been on the ASRB, really know a lot about planning, and have good ideas. I do think more, as, as, as you said, Mayor Drembowski, that, that more public input is going to be important, so we get it right this time. This is the biggest thing that's happened since the general plan. We want it to turn, there's, there's just so many moving pieces. There's, we've got state highway coming through that completely changed the face of the town with none of our input, and so it looks like a freeway coming down, you know, from the Chevron all the way to Roberts'. So we've got to get it right. I, I, the firm sounds like they're done their homework, they understand enough about the town, and, and we've got to, I, I think, look at rezoning some of the commercial district, weaving in the next phase of housing in Town Center. Just a million moving pieces, and I, I, we, we've got to get the right people and good ideas and get it right this time. So thank you for taking this on, and I don't want to be on the committee, but I do think more public input and more good ideas.
Thank you, and we know nothing about pitchforks.
Oh.
Mr. Hughes.
Thank you.
You want to go on?
Yeah.
It's not important.
Apropos the, the previous comment, I personally have served on many governmental committees in the national and state level, and one observation is that the success or failure of the committee, as, as laid out, what, what the people who founded the committee are looking for, depends almost entirely on who chairs it. If you have an active, involved chair who has sources all over the place for ideas, who, and who really runs a tight ship, you can get remarkable things done with a good chair. And so I would, my reaction to an unchaired committee is, it's not going to do anything meaningful. It may just validate decisions made other places. Now, my main comment is, I, we're missing one huge issue that we all, except for Mr. Abresh, you only were at one meeting, I think, this housing element. We suffered, we argued. It was, and particularly, people like myself and my family, who live a few hundred yards from the Raymundo project that was approved in the housing element, and we live up that winding road that is a death trap if you ever have a, an emergency. So, and we, and a lot of our neighbors really, really thought that the, the Raymundo project and the High Road projects should not have been there, and rather should have been in the Town Center. You don't put low-income people out 10 miles or, well, we're not 10, we're, we're three or four, and then expect, expect them not to have, not to require other services, like install a shuttle bus to, to take them to and from the project, or something like that. It isn't a simple thing, like, okay, we only have 100 people to throw under the bus, that's better than that other group that has a loud voice. So anyway, could we put more emphasis on affordable housing in this? Rather than just one or two words, could we make that one of the big issues? Put affordable housing downtown where it belongs. It really does belong, the federal law, state law regulate everything. It doesn't belong in High Road, nor does it belong in, in Raymundo. I'm not trying to reargue that, but what I'm saying is, we want to reduce the pressure that we'll face in the next housing element, or if we don't fulfill this, to, for affordable housing, and it's going to get more and more difficult, let's anticipate it, let's put it in the center of town where it belongs. It really does belong there. Okay.
Thanks, John. And, yeah, land use is a part of it. Maybe I'll just ask Troy to respond to one thing. You, you, you mentioned a chairless committee. I think one of the things that was identified is perhaps having an outside consultant versus internal folks, and maybe produce a better outcome in almost a chair-like function. How do you think about your function in terms of running those meetings efficiently?
Yeah, I think that, that is the key role that you've asked us and brought us on to play, is that we serve as an effective driver and organizer of the committee, but without necessarily having any local conflict of interest or bias. And so we're, we're, we're there to make sure that we do drive towards, you know, an outcome, but without necessarily appointing someone, one resident over another. So that's where we usually see that our role is, is, is best leveraged in, in that, in that driver's seat of the CAC.
Thank you. Ms. Paletti.
Hi, I'm Sue Paletti, and I haven't had the opportunity to meet our new town manager, but welcome to Woodside.
Thank you very much.
I'm here tonight because I'm interested in serving on the CAC for the Town Center. I've been a Woodside resident for 36 years. I live on Raymundo, and in 1989, we bought our home, and we actually signed the papers in the Canyatta Building. And as we were walking out of that building, I told my husband, we ought to buy this building and move our business here. And by we, I meant our, my business partner and friend, Pat Delgavio. And in 1994, Pat and I bought that building. And I'm talking about the office building that is in the Town Center, catty-cornered from Roberts Market. It's a historic building in town, so I'm very much interested in the future of that area, and I have a deep appreciation for the character of Woodside. I would welcome the opportunity to serve on the committee and offer my perspective as both a property owner and a stakeholder in the preservation and development of our Town Center. Thank you for your consideration.
Thank you, Sue. I have no hands up in the Zooms. Yep. Oh, there's two hands. I was just on the wrong page.
Walter Cook, I'm a president of Woodside.
Yes.
Quick question that I'd like to have answered, is what is the budget soup to nuts, and then what is, what is that on a per capita basis for you? We're, we're around 6,000 people now, 500 in Woodside, for the project, for your, your part of it?
Yeah. This is about 600, right? About 50, 600?
667,000, I believe.
For years, for years?
Two years.
About two years.
We should also mention, just on that point, that we don't really have a choice. This is part of the mandated submission for the housing element, so we have to complete it, we have to complete this process.
Hi, Son again, Circulation Committee Chair. I just wanted to, from the Circulation Committee standpoint, I want to advocate for the extended boundary, that green boundary, if not even slightly more. I think one thing we often hear when we're discussing projects is, oh, you're just looking at it in isolation. This is just one little project here, how does it affect the rest of town? I think extending it to those regions, especially going west, I think is key, because I think that's the most congested area. It's a spot that we have all sorts of ideas, and they're all really over-constrained, complicated, expensive, et cetera, and how does it affect the rest of that thoroughfare? So I think extending to that region, we would definitely appreciate. I think it would help kind of bring some cohesiveness to the projects that we're thinking of and trying to propose, and trying to, again, encourage pedestrians and kids and bicyclists and whoever to kind of get around town in ways besides that are just cars. I won't speak to the property side. I think that's outside of my expertise, but in terms of the experience I have, I think it would be very useful. I'd even go a little further west, maybe even to Kings Mountain or somewhere between there and where it's shown. But no, I think that, that extension is definitely useful. We could go in the other directions too, but I think the other ones, you know, mountain homes are a little less dense, Canyatta is wider, has sidewalks, et cetera, trails, and then going east towards 280, again, it's part of it already, so. That sounded illegal. Anyways, yeah, thank you very much.
Thank you.
My name's Dan Drucker. I run one of the three HOAs on the east side of 280, along with my partners, Patrick and Wendy, who run the Woodside Hills and Woodside Heights HOAs. We talked about this topic extensively, and the two things I'd like to make sure on folks' radar, one is the ability for all of the eastsiders to get to town. So currently, there's no safe route for us to navigate to Town Center. So it's something I'd love to see be thought about, at least as part of this project, is how can our kids and everybody else get there? Second thing is, as we talked about it, the whole housing element came up as the top thing we all thought about as well, too. So really thinking about what is walkable housing that's going to encourage more retail, make it a better economic benefit for more retail to exist in downtown. So there's more economic incentives for more local focus, focused retail was a big thing that the three of us thought about when we met to talk about this project. So those are, those are our ideas.
Appreciate it. Thank you, Dan.
Yes.
Just a quick one. The whole recusal process, Pat Delgavio, I have a business and a home in town, but the recusal process, as Dick has brought up, is a challenge. I'm on ASRB, and so I'm recused twice for being business owner and homeowner, which is fine, but when it comes to this, it would seem like it would be a lot of a wasted time, because if we're recused every time our building is brought into play, why are we here to discuss the Town Center if we're located in Town Center? So I just think that needs to have a little bit of review. Thank you.
Thank you. I think we're going to jump real quick to the Zoom room. Got two hands up. We'll start with David Mittelman.
Good evening, Mayor, Councilors, and fellow residents. David Mittelman, to Andy Grandview, member of the ASRB. I apologize for not being able to attend in person tonight, but I respectfully request your consideration for my appointment to the Citizen Advisory Committee. First, I want to acknowledge the thoughtful work that has gone into assembling this committee. However, I have noticed that District 5 currently lacks representation. Representing all districts is essential for creating a plan that reflects the diverse perspectives and needs of our entire community. As resident of District 5, my appointment would ensure that every district in Woodside has a voice in shaping the future of our Town Center. I also bring the relevant experience and a demonstrated commitment to civic engagement in Woodside. I have attended many of the town council meetings on the housing element in their entirety, which has given me a strong understanding of the issues, concerns, and opportunities facing our town. Furthermore, I currently serve on the ASRB, wherever I have worked collaboratively to balance the interests of residents, preserve the character of Woodside, and thoughtfully review development proposals. My experience on the ASRB has taught me the importance of listening, building consensus, and approaching complex issues with an open mind. I am committed to bringing, bringing these qualities to the advisory committee, ensuring that all voices feel heard, and that our, our recommendations are both practical and inclusive. I appreciate your consideration. I would be honored to serve Woodside in this crucial capacity, and help guide the future of our Town Center, benefiting all residents. Thank you.
Thank you, David. And we'll go to Maggie Ma in the Zoom room. Ms. Ma, you are on mute.
Hello.
There you go.
Hi. I confess that I did not hear all of the, the people who've been suggested to participate on the committee, but it sounded like a really short list, and it also sounded like it might have excluded some people that have a long history with this. And given the complexity of Woodside, I, I suggest that more scrutiny be given to the list of people who are on that committee, in particular, people who participated in the last Town Center project, including Steve Lubin and Steve Patrick. They are both solution-oriented. They've both lived here for a very long time, and they both know what the hell they're doing. So I think it would be a really good idea to reconsider the panel of people. I would also advocate that this group be, one of these people be someone who's at least involved or very familiar with the horse community, because this is something that is very important to Woodside. is very important to Woodside. It's the number-two thing on the general plan. And, you know, we, it's 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 getting more and more difficult for the horse community to navigate with increased traffic, et cetera. It's becoming, and increased traffic on trails, et cetera, in the Town Center, it's becoming more difficult to navigate. So day of the horse, all that stuff is all good, but the rubber meets the road, pardon the term, when there's better circulation available for this important aspect of our community. So I also want to say that the last Town Center plan, I remember it very well, and to and to underscore what Thalia said, it blew up because one person had took hold of of the Town Center Plan process and blew it up, basically. It was pretty, it was pretty disastrous. So I would certainly hope that that doesn't happen again. Thank you.
We hope so, too. Thank you, Maggie. I have no other hands up in the Zoom. Any other last comments for public comment? Seeing none, we will close public comment and move to council deliberations. All right. You always anchor us. Thanks, Mr. Brown.
Okay. Yeah, I'd like to start with the idea of our discussion of boundaries, starting with the idea of what is our vision for this community? I note that the last two committees over the years have said we are a rural community. I think if we took a vote today in the community, we'd say the same thing. We are a rural community. If you're a rural community, by definition, there are certain things you want and certain things you don't want. And one thing I want to talk about is is I don't have a problem right now with the extent of the expansion we're looking at, but to say that we want to to have broad expansion of downtown strikes me as not keeping to the concept of rural. The idea of basically catering to what Sacramento tells us to do, our housing, also does not say that is what we as a community want. This is rural Woodside. Let's plan for rural Woodside. The second thing I want to talk about again is the idea of conflict of interest or not conflict of interest. I cannot conceive of moving forward with any kind of a plan for for the Town Center without the involvement of our key stakeholders right now, who are the property owners. And so I think whatever, however we want to work it, we've got to find a way to incorporate their thinking and their thoughts into what we do. And I think that the best way to do that is incorporate them in committees. Particularly, I know that two of them have a long, long, long history with Woodside. Aside from being property owners, they know this town extremely well.
So are you saying that we can't really address boundaries until we understand vision? Or are you saying you want?
That's what I'm saying. I think they don't necessarily go together.
Yep. And what you're saying on the committee is property owners are an important stakeholder that should be represented. Okay. Thank you. I guess we're going down the line, Councilmember Wall.
So, let's see. I'll start with the property boundary. I'm generally in support of the recommendation from the staff. I think it represents a pretty modest expansion of the of the boundary that was already in place. And I get the the theory behind extending the boundary down Woodside Road. I think that gives us, as Hassan, who's the co-chair of our Circulation Committee, pointed out, that gives us a nice opportunity to consider paths and circulation into the Town Center. And so I I think that's really important. I think that gives us the opportunity to look at safe routes to school, but also just safe routes generally around town and and figure out opportunities for improving paths and whatnot. I would make the same argument as, I think it was Mr. Drucker, who pointed out that I think the residents east of 280 as well have similar concerns. And so I would actually be supportive of extending the town boundary east down Woodside Road as well, potentially even all the way to to 280. And I think, you know, we do have some projects in play that would address some of those circulation issues, but if this was an opportunity to further that, I would support that as well. So that's my take on the property boundary. In terms of the Citizen Advisory Committee, it's, I I I see, I see what the town staff was trying to do, but it's hard. I just, I don't think I could quite wrap my head around supporting the Citizens Advisory Committee as it shows up in the in the agenda and the packet. First off, I think, before we appoint the specific members of the Citizen Advisory Committee, I do think we need to understand this conflicts and recusal issue. So I I I actually think, for me, there's no way to make the appointment tonight, because we don't understand fully what would it look like if, for example, you know, the Gilberts family, if Leanne Gilberts was on it, what would it look like? What would be her recusal obligations if we were talking about changes to not only her property, but property adjacent to her property? So I really do think we need to understand that issue before we appoint the specific men members of the Citizen Advisory Committee. And I think, like, you know, I I 100% agree that the commercial property owners are very important stakeholders, and I definitely want them engaged. I'm not sure having them on the Citizens Advisory Committee is the only way to do that. I can imagine another scenario where we engage them as a group separately. So I'd be interested in maybe exploring that angle as well and potentially keeping the Citizens Advisory Committee. Maybe there's a a place for a small number of commercial stakeholders, but right now it's weighted pretty heavily. It's not 50%, but it's four out of the 10, and that's a pretty heavy weighting for the commercial property owner. So that's one thing that that causes me a bit of concern. And I definitely, like was said a number of times tonight, really want to prioritize getting this right. Another thing that's really clear to me is that we had a number of residents tonight express their interest in serving on the committee, and thank you very much. Like, that's amazing, and your interest is is great. Like, we want people to put up their hands. I think in order to do that, though, I think we need to have a process for that. So what I really sort of wish we were looking at tonight was what would an application for the Citizens Advisory Committee look like? What questions would we ask our residents? What would we want them to tell us about themselves so that we could make an informed decision about who would be on this committee? Let's see. You know, in my mind, a balanced committee would look like some members of our commercial property owner community, some members of our volunteer committee committees, but also some residents that are interested and have certain expertise or other attributes that make them particularly well-suited to serve on this committee. So the the current recommendation, in my mind, is not is not weighted appropriately. We're not, we're not striking the right balance. For example, you know, we had somebody, Carly Rivera, who's a member of the school community, sent in an email expressing expressing her desire to serve. And she noted that she could really bring expertise related to safe routes to school and also represent the school itself. So I think I would love to see and evaluate more individuals like that to see if they should be included on the Citizens Advisory Committee. So I guess my recommendation or my request to the council or what I'm recommending is I think we we should open this up and engage in an application process. I think we could do that pretty quickly. I don't think it's something that necessarily would have to cause a huge delay, but I think I I think we would get a better result. And I think that, you know, clearly, we've heard that from the community and from our consultant, that prioritizing getting this right is really the highest priority.
So you are for extending the boundary east towards 280, and you're saying you cannot support the CAC in its current formation at this time and just, but you, and we can engage property owners differently, although I just want to check just so I understand what you're saying there. Are you saying that, I mean, in the extreme on the other side is having a committee without stakeholders could end up completely as a wasted effort because people have ideas, but the stakeholders have no interest in pursuing those ideas? So how do you sort of think about that logic?
I think first and foremost, we need to understand how conflicts will be handled vis-à-vis folks that own commercial properties. I think we need to understand that. I, my logic is not that commercial property owners shouldn't be included. I 100% think that they should be, but inclusion can look like a number of different things. One, it could be an appropriate weighting on the CAC. So right now, it's four out of 10, and I think that's too heavy of a weighting. I think there's another scenario or maybe, you know, a a different approach where we could engage the commercial property owners separately. So whether that's a a different advisory committee or just a concerted effort on the part of the consultant to make sure that that group is included, reached out to, engaged. So, yeah, that's, that's what I'm thinking.
Thank you. What do you think? You want to go first? Councilman?
So for the the first-issue expansion, I think I have a question first for Troy. If we expand the boundaries, like, for example, beyond what's in yellow or what's in green, is that going to change the the cost? I imagine it will, but is it a significant cost change?
It depends how much we're expanding. Probably a marginal difference in cost. I would say it's might take a little longer if we're looking at a lot more areas, but I would say that's probably not the the cost is probably not the biggest consideration with respect to the boundary change.
Okay. Thank you. So for me, I think, I agree it makes sense to expand it, especially westward. I think we have, you know, for example, the current downtown, the yellow portion is, I think, primarily privately owned, whereas we have some more control, I think, as we go west, there's more private, or not private, public property that I think would be, I believe, easier for us to modify. As to the CAC, I personally think it's the most important thing to have the property owners involved, because if they're not buying in, I think it goes nowhere. And so I think it's really important to hear every voice that wants to be heard as the property owners and to get their feedback. And then I think Jen raised a really good issue about the conflict issue. If having them on the CAC is going to prevent them from actually being involved when it comes to their property, then I feel like we're going to have a big problem by having them on it, and it'll be counterproductive. So I I agree with her and with Jen on that, on that issue. I think we need to nail that down first, because I don't want to have it, you know, this plan to have them super-involved and then preventing them from being directly involved when it comes to the projects that they would actually be able to to move forward. As to the broader selection process for the CAC, I do agree with a number of people that shared that I think we're missing some opportunities to add really sharp people that know what they're doing, that are very, that have been here a long time in Woodside and that have a lot of deep knowledge, including Steve Lubin, Steve Patrick. So I would be open to possibly expanding that. Also, Ms. Paletti, as a property owner, I think, I don't know if, I don't know if we're talking about removing anybody from the current list or just expanding it. I don't know if 13 is too many, but it would also be nice to have somebody from District Five, but at some point, I think we end up, you know, losing effectiveness if we if we keep expanding, expanding. So those are my thoughts.
Thank you. And Mayor Protem Gold.
I got to say, this is one of the better meetings I've ever attended. Seriously, I mean, it was really productive, and I, we could have easily have been here at 1:00 in the morning, and here it is 9:00, and we've accomplished so much. We're not reopening it to the public, so it's okay. Oh, you think I'm going to give a hinner on this thing? So this, the comments were just so good, I almost don't know where to start, but I'll think of something. This is big, as has been said. This is the biggest thing we've done since the general plan and the housing element, for sure, and I think we're off to a pretty good start so far. And I think it's important, as many people have said, to get it right. I'm much more concerned about doing that than I am the time or the money. It's just too big. We've, we've had, our history has not been so great here. And I think that this plan dates back only 55 years to 1970. So I think that giving this a good, thorough look-over is certainly called for. The biggest thing has been public engagement, and I'm going to mention that in a second. But before I do that, I did want to comment on the boundaries, because so many good points were made, as I said before. Dan Drucker had mentioned us, us Eastsiders having better routes to get here, and I I agree with that wholeheartedly. And so I'm, I'm certainly for making it more expansive. I think Dick made a great point, and that is, we're rural and sort of limiting it, but just because it's included doesn't mean we're developing it. And so when you, when you include the area, you can actually preserve it. So I think that, I think the way to accomplish it is to make it more expansive. This committee can't bring things in that we don't include, but they can exclude things that we didn't include. So, so by making it bigger, we don't lose anything. Making it smaller, I don't know, you want to do safe routes to the elementary school. If the elementary school is not included, you know, your, your, your road ends, maybe it ends at Bucks, and, you know, you you have this void there. So I'm for making it as expansive as possible, and I think Hassan made a great point, and that is, you know, include it, and it'll, it at least gives the committee the flexibility to include that in trails, walking, pedestrian issues, certainly cycling, all those things that we're all looking at here. So I'm for going as far as possible, but but I certainly think we've got to include the school. I mean, I need, it needs to go at least that far. The Little Store has been mentioned. It's been mentioned going all the way to, I don't know, you can go to the Western Hills, I guess, but but I think certainly going to the Little Store is not stretch here. And as I said, I'm less concerned about the cost and the time. Let's get it right, include it. If the committee decides where they want to preserve some things and put them off limits, go for it. Same thing heading east. I think you just made a great point, and and that is, we should include it. There are some properties there that are important, I think, to include in this area. So on the committee, I'm taking all of this in and trying to come up with something that that could work here. I think it's important for us to vote on something tonight, I think, to to get something done. I think the boundaries might be the low-hanging fruit. We can get that done. Let me offer something on the committee that 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 at least we might be able to move forward, if not necessarily approve it. I agree with the comments that have been made here, and what I heard, David Mittelman said this, is that districts should be represented, and I I certainly understand that it's important for, to get the constituency in here, at least to be heard, and especially based upon what Troy mentioned. based upon what Troy mentioned about the composition of the meetings and the way they're going to be done and the public input, which may be somewhat limited, I think, at some of these meetings. So, um, I think that, um, it may be important to have representation at the committee level. It's hard, I mean, we can limit the public, but then they need to be at least on the committee, at least a person. So what, what I'm going to suggest, just for the council to sort of move this forward, um, is that I like the composition as it is. I think that it's fine, but why not include some additional folks to make sure that all the districts are represented? And to do that without, we're, we're fortunate here that we've got the August recess coming up. I don't want to lose a month here. I think that that would be, you know, here, we're, we're already here mid-June. Uh, we've got one more meeting in June, two in July, and then we've got kind of the recess for a month. That we could assign, the town attorney mentioned this, we could assign a subcommittee to sort of hopefully get a nomination or two from each district to move forward. I think Councilmember Wall made the point, I don't know how we do that. I think that, that we, we should discuss. I don't know whether we put out a mailer and try to get applications in, put something on the website, but I think that we could have a subcommittee that kind of reviews some applications, comes up with some names to suggest to the council and we add those to this group. So that allows us to vote on this and say, we're going to have another member representing each district in addition to this. I don't think that's too much. I, I think it's certainly manageable. Um, I think, uh, it, it's possible we might be able to even accomplish some goals here by going to a committee and include people, uh, there. By the way, I wanted to point something out. If we expand the territory here, we expand the boundaries, we have other property owners now too who won't be represented. So, so consider that. If we go, if we go east and west, there's going to be other, other businesses and property owners that are not represented. There will always be property owners not represented here. I do agree with what Hassan said, they need to be of a voice or they're not going to be able to implement the plan. So anyway, my suggestion here, I think the boundaries were, I'm just for more expansive than less. We can put things off limit to address, uh, Councilmember Brown's issue about, uh, keeping it rural and maybe keeping it tight. But, um, as far as the committee goes, I'm, I'm fine with it as it is, but I would just propose, let's add a, a district, you know, somebody from each district here, have a subcommittee review applications and bring it back to the council quickly and, uh, we can, you know, uh, get them in and make sure that they're Brown Act qualified.
Thank you. No, it's, it's great and you're sort of stealing a fair bit of thunder, so I'm in widespread agreement with you, but, uh, maybe also just say, this is actually a really exciting moment. I know we're all very serious about it, but it's the first time we're taking a look since 70s, okay? So it's, we should be, we should be very, very excited about this. Um, uh, the question is going to be, uh, and what I'd like to do is try to get to some form of consensus here, which I know isn't easy, but maybe we all leave a little bit unhappy and that is a good definition, as we've said before. Uh, on the committee, um, I'm actually in the camp that I like the committee composition. I, I'm really appreciative of the thought that went into bringing experts who are at the top of their committees who are part of the arc of the storyline and combining those folks with stakeholders who I think, um, are really important. It's been said a couple of times, but this is basically a, a public-private partnership approach, right? Uh, we can only zone, we can't build, we can't, you know, so it's important that they're all represented. And I'm very confident, particularly if we make sure that the stakeholders want to opt in or are allowed to opt in. Uh, as far as, uh, I think what I would propose is just something to think about as I finish my remarks, but I might just propose like we, we appoint a subcommittee and we say that subcommittee can come back with up to five recommendations, whether they be completely at large because they are experts in the field or they are from an underrepresented district, uh, whatever that is. Um, and we're going to have a little time because we have to send something out, we'll have some time to meet again and talk about what the criteria are that we think we need to augment the committee. Um, and I think that would create a committee that increases the committee by a third, so that's responsive to what we're hearing, but maybe doesn't get us into that 25, 30 spot where it's three hours of deliberations and what constitutes a quorum, 17 people or something, right? It's, you're going to, you're going to get into some dark places, right? So, um, maybe that's a compromise, I throw it out there, uh, for folks to think about a little bit. Um, we can come back to it. On the boundaries, uh, I thought there was a great, a comment over here that, uh, it's a great question. How much does this cost? You know, if we're going to spend $660,000, are we really going to do something limited? Are we going to look more expansively? And, um, I do like the idea of extending to the east as well. Um, I don't, I don't think, it's hard, I think, to say we're going to extend all the way down to 280 in this moment. I think that might be a different problem we, we would solve outside of this. But I don't, I don't think it's hard to argue that we could move 100 feet or 200 feet down to cover the Haciendas area. I mean, we have, that's where we have vacant lots, for God's sakes, right? So we have things that we might be able to do there. Um, so I think that's where I would be that, you know, um, and, and by the way, this is a starting place, just to make an obvious statement, the committee can come back with a different, morph this thing in different directions, right? But as a starting place, I don't think we should abdicate our responsibility. We should, we should give our opinion about where this should be. So, um, I like the right of way and then extending the right of way to the east to 280 if we can and, um, and then simply saying that any property that's adjacent to that, if it's viable and the private property owner has interest in discussion, um, you know, it's part of the process. There's nothing wrong with hearing where people are. So, um, I, I think what I wrote down here is, uh, I'm wondering, I, now, there's this one last issue, actually, um, which we seem to be getting hung up on, which is the recusal process. But I, I don't, to me, that doesn't hang up a decision tonight. Uh, to me, that's, that's follow-up and that's just going to, that's, that's the nature of having stakeholders on a committee is, I mean, it's no different, we, we go do a project in the Glenns, we don't say nobody, anybody with Glenns properties can't speak tonight or whatever. I mean, you know, we have to have the stakeholders engaged, so we just have to figure out how to do that. I don't think that hangs us up, in my opinion, but, and I'm looking to you, I'm not really asking a question, maybe I am. Do you think this hangs us up in any way?
No, I think you can go forward and appoint this evening if, if, if there's consensus to do so and I'll come back to you and tell you if there are any limitations on those folks as they serve.
Yeah.
I mean, other communities have done this. I will find some opinion letters, I think, that will support their involvement.
Yeah. We also have this complexity, which is we missed a property owner that's interested. Um, and I don't know how to handle that, uh, in this moment, other than saying perhaps a stakeholder is a viable addition to that five person at large. You have a stakeholder, you have some expert architects, you have some districts that are underrepresented getting a representation, uh, a representative, um, but that's up to the subcommittee to come back and, um, and do. I, I, are there people that would have, if we did this, are there people on the council that would have interest in serving on the subcommittee? We have a definite? We have another definite? We have two definite?
You can only have two.
You can only have two? Yep. Okay. Oh, this is exciting, the two of you together. Um, it's, it's, it's going to be.
That's because Councilmember Wall and I work so well together.
Well.
We've handled the appointments quite.
Hey, there it is. It's the Appointment Committee coming together.
We're the Appointment Committee.
And, um, you know, it's going to be two sticks rubbing together and make fire. It's going to be amazing. Um, so, uh, I'm, I think I would love to try to propose a compromise, which is, uh, the existing map plus out to the east at 280 as a starting place. It's going to evolve, adjacent properties can be engaged. Uh, a subcommittee of Councilmember Wall and Mayor Protam Gold is appointed to find up to five additional folks that would augment the committees, uh, to make it a stronger committee with expertise, representation, um, and stakeholders.
Can I ask a clarifying question? So you're suggesting to extend the boundary just along Woodside Road? We wouldn't actually put additional parcels on the map. It would just, you know, like the staff recommended to include the Woodside Road as the boundary? Okay.
Yeah, it would be just the right of way, but we say that the committee, you know, can engage adjacent properties.
Which it can anyway, right?
Can anyway, and of course it's going to evolve anyway. This is just a starting place.
And then are you suggesting or proposing that we would extend the Woodside Road boundary west all the way to the Little Store?
Don't have a strong feeling on that. Okay, you'd like to. You've got, you've got three and two neutrals, so, okay.
Yeah, I'm, I support that.
Works? That works. Okay. And of course, the committee can evolve, um, all these plans and will, and will be reporting back to us along the way. And, um, would that compromise work as a mo, a general motion? Yes?
Clarification on the boundary, so I know it's Woodside Road, Little Store, that's easy. What is it to the east? Is this going to go? I think at minimum it should include Haciendas and.
Intersection. Yeah. Long Woodside Road.
Which includes two more properties.
Yeah.
To me, that's the minimum. I'd like to go to the 280, but I.
I, I'd like to go to 282.
Remember that the committee.
There's got to be 280. I can't go halfway with a pedestrian bathroom and stop.
Okay.
280, 280, 280.
All right. Okay. So this is how sausage is made, right here. Um, okay. Yes, Gene?
Nice for clarification. Will the subcommittee come back with recommended, um, five, um, individuals for the council to make that appointment? Is that correct?
Yeah, that's the goal. If there's a split vote, then they're going to have to bring back their top, each of their top candidates and we will quiz them on, on why that candidate should be, and we'll have to have a vote at this level.
And do you want to put a deadline on us? Like, when would you like us to make this recommendation? And happy to work within any deadline that you propose.
Oh, if we send out, what is the process? We have to send out cards to every single resident, then we have to wait several weeks, the deadline, then there would be an interview process. I mean, I don't know how you're going to get this done before recess. Although, you know, if the council wants to meet to do just this in August, we can also schedule meetings at the end of the world.
How long would it take to do a mailer? And, and we got to give them a two weeks to respond, I think.
And we have to develop the criteria.
I'm going to defer to the man that's probably done more mailers than me by far and that would be Sage.
Um, so I think you, we, we could get a mailer together relatively quick. It could go out, um, by the end of this week. Uh, you could give people, you know, we could look at the calendar and maybe with a shot of getting on the first meeting in July, um, so giving people at least a couple of weeks. Uh, then applications would come in and the subcommittee could just review the applications and then make their selections from those applications, bring that back to council, uh, maybe first meeting in July, maybe worst case, second meeting in July and then decisions made. Um, and that would keep us close to on schedule. Um, if we hit the first meeting in July, maybe we stay almost on schedule. Would that work for you guys?
I, thank you for proposing that compromise. I think that's a really nice compromise.
Up to five. It's up to, we don't have.
Right, I think you guys could, uh, provide up to five recommended and the council can deliberate over who or all of them to.
Great.
Okay. So that would be a very complicated motion to reiterate. We, we have it on recording, uh, so can we motion on that?
Yes, you can.
Okay. Is there a motion?
It's a move.
Is there a?
Second.
Okay. All right, Jen.
Councilmember Aparish?
Yes.
Councilmember Brown?
Yes.
Councilmember Gold?
Yes.
Councilmember Wall?
Yes.
Mayor Domkowski?
I believe it, but yes. Wow, did that just happen? Um, okay, well, very good. Thank you all for your participation and, um, I mean, it's just the start of a long multi-year, 18-month process, so we'll look forward to your engagement. Uh, and from there, we will move to, uh, volunteer update?
Yeah, I'm going to go ahead and give the volunteer update. So Recreation Committee update, uh, Adult Coed Softball League registration is now open. Information is on the Community tab on the town's website. And then the Spirit of Woodside Photography Contest is now open for youth ages five to 18. Flyers are in the back of the room here if you would like to take some to distribute and that's all. Thank you.
You? Uh, Council Communications? Nothing? Nothing? All right, I'll just mention that yesterday I participated in the city selection meeting for A-BAG, um, and those are the folks that do the Rena allocation. And then after reviewing all the credentials, I, I, I did cast our vote for the two incumbents who did both win overwhelmingly and, um, uh, as well as, there was a couple of alternates, but everybody always attends, so the alternates are less relevant, I guess. But it was a reminder to me that, um, two years from now, we'll be starting the Rena Cycle VII planning process and to the degree that we can get representation there from the committee, from us, the council, would be amazing. Uh, we have a lot to advocate for. Uh, the other thing, just as a heads up, they mentioned at that meeting, I think we've all received an email, but, uh, Burlingame is hosting the Council City Meetings on June 27th at Top Golf, uh, in Burlingame, in case anyone is available to represent Woodside.
I will be there.
I will be there as well.
My God. Because I'm going now.
Looking forward to golfing together.
That's great. Okay, well, thank you both. Uh, I may see you there then. I don't want to go solo. Uh, okay, uh, and I think with that, uh, we will adjourn at 9:25. Thank you all.